On behalf of Mayor Earl Johnson and all the members of the City Council of Alabama, Joe Dix, Dennis Mount, Hazel Griffin, Ralph Wells, Terry Powell, and all the members of our team here in the City of Alabama, we're honored to have you with us here today for this historic occasion. It is historic because when Mayor Johnson takes the oath of office, he will be the first fifth-term mayor in the history of the City of Alabama. And Terry Powell will be the first fifth consecutive term member of the Alabama City Council also in the history of the City of Alabama. These are not individual records, but certainly it's at the level of continuity of leadership in the City of Alabama. Dennis Mount will begin a fifth term, four of which are consecutive, Hazel Griffin performs a second term, and Ralph Wells a third consecutive term. At the conclusion of the term, the new term that we're about to begin, which is his first term, this council has a combined ninety-two years, over twenty-three terms of service and experience. Would you please stand as Tommy Angie, our Director of Leadership, leads the occasion. Ladies and gentlemen, the City Council of Alabama's leaders and ambassadors, you have a pleasure to lead this good time.
My head's... Our Father, our Lord, and our Savior, oh, we thank you for this day and for this opportunity just to lift you up in prayer, because you and your long-lost brethren. Oh, we thank you for all your blessings that you shower down on us daily. We come to this time asking your blessings on the people who have been called to lead the community in which we live, work, and play. Remind them that they are not only leaders, but servants, whose responsibility is to serve the common good of all the people who live here in the City of Alabama. Grant them the wisdom and courage to know and do what is right, and what is good, and what is true. May they always be guided by your Holy Spirit's Word, the Spirit of community, the Spirit of justice, and the Spirit of love. And now, Father, we ask that you please forgive us of all our sins. In your precious name of Jesus, we pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the great goal of which we stand, one nation under God, united as one, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen.
I would be more than remiss if I didn't point out that my wife Sylvia is the first and fifth-term First Lady of the City of Alabama, and, in my opinion, the very best one we've ever had, so thank you so much. We are very pleased to welcome each of you here today. I know that we have family and friends of the New York City Commission, as well as members of the Chamber of Commerce, the Board of Directors of the Chamber of Commerce and the Administrator, members of our industrial board, and thank you for being here. We have friends, family, all, everyone gathered in this room, ambassadors, thank you so much for being here and making this place look a lot better than it is. This building was built in nineteen fourteen, so we're celebrating its one-hundred-sixth birthday this year, one-hundred-seventh coming up. I tell people I want to introduce them to the ladies, so they're very happy to be here. When I think back to the day that I first took office of Mayor in two thousand, I am astounded at how both the world and our community have changed. In two thousand, Google was a new technology, and I had no more tax and not led us into a decades-long war on terror yet. People smoked in restaurants. The Blackberry was the handheld device of the day, and we were seven years away from the first iPhone, Facebook, YouTube, and Twitter, and not even yet the smartphone, perhaps, or... Here in Alabama, we have only begun to dream of the innovative ways we could enhance our community. We began by improving East Greenlock Street, sidewalks, and street lamps. We renovated this historic building that we're in here today as our new City Hall. We worked with the Community Building, memorial tribute outback for our veterans who have so long served our country. At Quadrarium, we celebrate, excuse me, that Quadrarium back in two thousand. We created a model that we've used again and again throughout the city to improve all of our entrances into the city, find modern uses for our beloved historic buildings, to build infrastructure that enhances the quality of life, and to work with the community to build the community. But we didn't accomplish all of those things because of Earl Johnson. We didn't accomplish it because of Earl Johnson, or just only Earl Johnson worked there. We accomplished these things because we had administrations that worked together to reach our goals. That's not to say that there have not been disagreements through the years. There have, but the leaders of this city worked through those disagreements so that we could continue to move the community forward. I would like to add that as part of that success has been the great employees of our city. Many of whom are here today, department heads, assistant department heads, thank you for all you have done to help make all these administrations successful through the years. Thank you so very much. I regularly tell people that I unfortunately have the best team of employees, department heads, leaders of each city and state, and I truly believe that. There have been many milestones and accomplishments in the last twenty years at which we could have said, "Okay, we're done." But if we had stopped, our community would have stopped. As leaders, we have to continue to challenge ourselves, to set new goals, and develop new projects to keep us moving forward. As we begin the new Quadrarium today, I am proud of the body of work we have behind us, and I'm excited about the work ahead. We are excited about continuing the interest shown in the downtown properties recently acquired earlier this year. We think we'll have more exciting announcements about the downtown in the coming months. Our rails-to-trails effort is still moving, slowly, but it's still moving, and we look forward to the opportunities that it provides. We will continue to look forward to sharing the additional retail announcements that we have been, that have been delayed due to the pandemic. I thank you for your trust that you put in me, allowing me to continue to serve as the mayor of this great city. I pledge to you that we are not done. We will continue to work towards goals for the next four years and beyond. We are pleased to have with us today another member of the community who has owned the Alabama Leadership for twenty years, some twenty years ago. Gary Smith served as Power South's president and CEO since two thousand. Gary earned a bachelor's license degree in accounting and economics from the University of North Alabama, where he now holds a seat on the Board of Trustees. He also earned a Juris Doctor degree from the Commonwealth School of Law, my alma mater. I know that you appreciate as much as I do what Power South means to our community. Please join me in welcoming today's keynote speaker, Gary Smith. I just call him Earl, because what I call him in my boardroom, he's on my board, he's one of my bosses. And when he asked me a few weeks ago to do this, I thought about it, I wondered why. Because Earl and I go back, I've been in Alabama now for thirty-four years, we go back about that long, and he was later, and I still remember a phone call I got late one afternoon, and he was, "Gary!" So he'd get, "It..." He used to, "It, Gary!" And I said, "Yeah, Earl?" He said, "I'm gonna buy a spring deal." And I said, "Well, what for?" He said, "Well, we're gonna make it an advanced site, and we're gonna clean it up, and it's gonna be the centerpiece of downtown, it's right there in the City Hall, and this is gonna be great. What do you think?" You remember what I said? I said, "I'm not sure I have such a good idea, or it's a lot of money, man. I don't want to let that one go on by." "Well, yeah, it's gonna be good, it's gonna be good." I said, "I don't know." He said, "I'm gonna do it anyway." So, I don't know if you can call it from my advice. Also, the little shopping center that used to be right there, talking about that, what do you think about that? I said, "Well, I mean, what are you gonna do with it? Earl, you already have the Springdale property, you have..." He said, "Well, it's gonna work." "How does it work?" And then he talked about the football stadium. The football stadium is downtown, no, you know, I have a pad I can see, so we're gonna change this football stadium, we'll make it different. We're gonna spend this and do this. And, I don't know, Earl, I like, I don't know about that. He said, "We're gonna do it anyway." And, so I watched all those things happen, and I have a list, and I have to read, because the list is too long, I've got into it, but there's so many other things. One is this building. I've written, how many, forty, ten years? I looked at it now, and I can remember when this, not, it was good for Earl, but I can remember when I was in elementary school, my youngest daughter, Carrie, she was a star of the place, I can relate right there when I said, "How proud I was." And many of you may have, have some money, maybe you own a school, others of you probably have children, they go to school here. Church Rink is good, my two oldest daughters went to Church Rink, and we saw that close and made it a cult, it was so nice. I mean, begging to do those things. Alibis, just a dead piece of rock, what did we do? What, what was that about? I mean, and look at it, we had that beautiful Chamber of Commerce building there near Johnson Bar, and I played softball there, honey. It was a lot different than those days, and it is now, of course, abandoned, a lot better, you're a lot better than the light. So, just, but, Per Patrick Park, another, I said, the list, high school indoor practice facility. I was talking to a friend of mine who played in the NFL, I won't call names, I said, "Town of ten thousand people, they have indoor practice facility, what do you think about that? How many do you say with indoor practice facility?" I mean, that is stating progress, we're moving forward, downtown streets, all the neighbors, all the communities. Clark D., I got on my list, the service, that's pretty important, too, need, need, need to take care of the school. That, that was, that was a good program, the first national bank building, which was literally falling down around us for all of us, and took care of that. Dennis and I were talking before about Shaw Industries, and how a joint effort to keep eleven hundred really good paying jobs in Alabama, and Earl said, "Oh, that, that place is deep now." I came here, we had a murder king, like we had a big mock, Saxon, Golden Rule, Jack's, Taco Bell, Popeyes, Liddy's is coming. And so, watched all that, and then I got some calls from Earl, too, that, that reason. One, he said, "No, we're thinking about doing this spiritual thing, or handicapped kids, and what do you think?" I didn't say no about that at all. I stepped up there and said, "Yeah, you know, that's a great idea, that's something we need to do." Candyland, again, what do you think? I said, "Yeah, that'd be a great idea, and we need to, and we need some wedding candy land." Splashback, that's the latest one, while it's going in now. So many things that the community, that Earl, that has always been in, the council has always been in, the community, all came together, and, believe it or not, in times where it gets wild, I look back and think, "Oh, why didn't I see, why didn't I see something, why didn't I say that?" And I sit back and think about that, and there's things. One, I didn't have that vision. I couldn't anticipate what was over the horizon, all I could see was what was too narrow. I didn't have the confidence to step out and say, "I'm gonna do it anyway, we'll take care of that." Because, from my perspective, I work in a letting be told, I'm thinking about letting, I'm trying to think about that horizon, look over it, I'm not working for a city, thinking about that city's horizon, look over. Most people don't work for a city, they don't have that sort of vision, over the horizon. But I'm really glad that Earl did, and I'm really glad the council did, because it's made, it made a tremendous difference in our city. And as we look to the future, we need leaders that have vision, and this state have courage and rest spirits to take care of these things and sit looking at, as we go forward in the future. Because the future, it's gonna change period from now to tomorrow. No matter when it is, I'm not predicting when it is, I just predict that it changes tomorrow. And the leaders of the future need to be prepared for that. If that's for me, it's not my callback, it is, but, but as, as I look at Earl, maybe we can squeeze these four and one more, because in four years, Earl, he'll still be younger than Donald Trump, aren't you, man? And they're trying to get more and more, so we'll be good for four, they have six terms. But when you look at Earl and I both, we were football, we were football, and we may be, and if you can, slightly, we're in the two-time, and we're still in, we're in football. And, so we need leaders as we go forward, that will have that vision, and have courage, and make the changes that we need. Now, I'm gonna talk about a few of the things that I think are important, because these are now within our realm of call, because we spend six to ten million dollars every year on economic help, not just here, we have thirty-nine counties in Alabama, and ten counties in Florida that we, we serve, we set a lot of economic help, try to bring jobs, try to better schools, try to do those things, but there, when I cut them off, it's really four simple things that are later to be considered in the report, because tomorrow will change. It will change everything about, and that, but it's only a remarkable thing, more so than any presidential election, in my, in my life. Because if Republicans win, there will be interaction, if Democrats win, there will be interaction. My prediction is that we'll see a lot of people leave, basically. We'll see people leave Atlanta, we'll see people leave New York, we'll see people leave Chicago, and they're gonna see communities like this, conservative, family, family-style communities where they create families, feel safe, and feel comfortable about their life. And as that happens, we have to be prepared, luckily, as I look around, Alabama is one of the most prepared cities that, that I can think of in our service territory. What we need to focus on is goods. I say the future right over there, a few years ago, my girl was right over there, some of us our age, they're terrible, they're the silent scouts, they don't be good, too. So, y'all, in the future, we need a workforce. The biggest detriment in Alabama, cities like that, like Alabama, is you don't have the workforce that you need to support the industry, the jobs, the good things, the good, people even work remotely, they want schools. We have to get serious about schools, and we have good schools, and I'm good enough. We have to get serious about education, we're, we're serious in that area, and not just in Alabama, all across to our boroughs. Schools are number one, second is healthcare. I don't mind living in a place with healthcare in provision, I want that to have availability of good healthcare, good doctors, dentalists, we need workforce to protect our health care, we need workforce recruiting doctors, get that expertise in, so those doctors will attract industry, will bring the jobs. Third, and I don't really know how to, what a term to use, because I'm sixty-six years old, and we didn't have broadband, we didn't have data transfer, I don't really know what to call it, it's not Netflix, it's not internet, it has the ability to move data, big packages of data instantly. If people work remotely, they need to move big models. One of the, one of the great impediments in this state right now is between two entities that are leaders of it, and leaders in genetics, Hudson Outland-Hudson, UAP in Birmingham, both are leading a few some private results, and they exchange data, you ever been on ancestry dot com, and spit in little things, and send it in, and die out? You have genetic patterns, that's a huge data model. They exchange those, they don't send me on the board with internet, they don't send it in electronic, it costs a lot, the pipe's not taken up, it doesn't transfer. They put them on hard drive, and put them in vans, and drive them back and forth, because it takes about nine hours to transfer nine genetic data. This is the future, it's broadband, it's the ability to move big packages of data. We need to have our home, we need to be looking for it, because it won't be that long, so far as like an interstate. If you don't have it, you don't want it. So, regardless of what it is, I know what it's about, and we need to do that. Finally, what we talked about was we need leadership, people with vision, behind us in the fourth quarter, people with anticipation, people with courage, saying that they do what needs to be done. Earl, congratulations, good luck to all of us, thank you. Gary, thank you for that inspiring speech. You talked about the fourth quarter, I'm really looking over to that. But we have something here, and I can tell you as a player, I mean, I'm getting a little bit of a...
Don't get too drunk, hold there, Mayor. Well, it's my privilege and pleasure, exactly, to administer the oath of office to the mayor and the city council, and I echo the comments of Gary Smith, that the future is very bright here in Alabama. Now, Mayor, I'm gonna repeat the oath of office, and one thing that trips everybody up is I'm gonna say, "I state your name." Don't say, state your name, state your name, okay? Ready? I state your name.
I proudly, honestly.
I solemnly swear.
I solemnly swear.
That I will support.
I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Alabama.
Constitution of the state of Alabama.
So long as.
So long as.
I continue as citizen thereof.
I continue as citizen thereof.
And that I will faithfully and honestly.
That I will faithfully and honestly.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of the office.
Of the office.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
I'm Gary, I'll give a brief message again. We will now conduct our first agenda as a new council, and this is what is called an organizational meeting, and I think that you have to sit through this, but it's not very long, and I'll take a minute to get through it. So, this is our November seventh, twenty-twenty organizational meeting of the Alabama City Council. First item of the business, we need space and time and a place for our regular meeting, our regular meetings, and the procedures that we will follow. In the past, we have been on the first and third Tuesdays of each month, the workshop starts starting at five o'clock, and the regular session is starting at six o'clock, unless there is a conflict with holiday or some unseen thing that we have to change that day, at which time we will give special notice to the public, to everyone involved as to a change. So, that is what we've been doing, the first and third Tuesdays of each month, as I stated. I recommend that in the past, we have followed Robert's rules of order, the last amended, and I would recommend that we continue to do that. We, if the council agrees with that, we'll need a motion and a second to adopt those things that I just stated.
Just where I move that we maintain the same time and place meetings going forward, that we observe Robert's rules of order as last amended, and also that this meeting today substitute for tomorrow's first Tuesday meeting for this month.
Okay. Heard the motion, and Mr. Powell, we have a second.
I'm second.
A second for Mr. Wells, do we have any further discussion, questions, or comments of the council on this? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, please indicate by raising your right hand to say aye.
Aye.
Next item will lead to a nomination and election of a mayor pro temp. The duties of the mayor pro temp set out by the Code of Alabama, but specifically they are to preside over the meetings of the council in the mayor's absence. So, we will leave a nomination for that position.
Mr. Mayor, that's nominated, Mayor Brown, for the sixth, for the sixth honor of Mayor Pro Temp in Alabama.
there is a conflict with holiday, or some unseen thing that we have to change that date, at which time we will give special notice to the public, and everyone involved is to change. So, that is, that's what we've been doing, the first and third Tuesdays of each month, as I stated. I recommend that in the past, we have followed Robert's rules of order, as last amended, and I would recommend that we continue to do that. We, if the council agrees with that, we'll need a motion of the second to adopt those things that I just stated.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we maintain the same time and place meetings going forward, that we observe Robert's rules of order as last amended, and also that this meeting today substitute for tomorrow's first Tuesday meeting for this month.
Okay. Heard the motion, and Mr. Powell, we have a second.
I'm second.
A second for Mr. Wells, do we have any further discussion, questions, or comments on the council on this? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, please indicate by raising your right hand and saying aye.
Aye.
Our next item will lead to a nomination and election of a mayor pro temp, the duties of the mayor pro temp set out by the code of Alabama, but specific where they are to preside over the meetings of the council in the mayor's absence. So we will leave a nomination for that position.
Mr. Mayor, I have to nominate Terry Powell for the sixth, for the sixth honor of mayor pro temp management.
All right, we have a motion by Mr. Wells, a nomination by Mr. Wells for Terry Powell for mayor pro temp, and we have a second.
Mr. Mayor, I second that motion.
Have a second by Mr. Diggs. Is any further, any further nominations? Hearing none, all in favor of Terry Powell for mayor pro temp, please indicate by raising your right hand and saying aye.
Aye.
We oppose the same sign. And I would like to point out, just for a matter of interest, that is the first official action taken by our newest member of this council, Joe Diggs. Good job, Joe. All right, our next item is to name the clerk, city clerk treasurer, and we'll leave a nomination for that position. Hey, I'd like to nominate John Thompson as city clerk and treasurer. Okay, a nomination by Mr. Mount, we have a second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Griffin. Or any other nominations? All in favor of naming Mr. Thompson's city clerk treasurer, please indicate by raising your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
And you oppose the same sign. I think it was unanimous. Thank you, John, you did a good job as you do, you're part of Berkeley, you've been there for years. I have a report to make as a city administrator, which is a new position, it's been created, but it's, it's not a full-time, single position, it's, it's basically, it goes with the, I did the resident city clerk treasurer, so that's a point. John Thompson is also a city administrator. Thank you for that, Tom. Next item of the business is the council's appointment of a member to the utilities board of the city of Anlouza. Hey, I'd like to nominate Terry Powell as our representative on the utility board of the city of Anlouza. All right, we have a nomination by Mr. Mount for Terry Powell for that position, we have a second.
I'm second.
Second by Mr. Wells, or any other nominations for that position? Hearing none, all in favor of Terry Powell as the member, council member on the utilities board, please indicate by raising your right hand and saying aye.
Aye.
We oppose the same. Hearing none, all unanimous, thank you for that. Council appointment to the board of directors of Southeast Alabama Gas District, we have a nomination for that position.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we appoint Mr. Kenneth Mount to the gas board.
All right, we have a nomination for Mr. Powell, we have a second.
I'm second.
Second by Mr. Wells, any further nominations? Hearing none, all in favor of Mr. Mount, please indicate by raising your right hand and saying aye.
Aye.
Right hand. Press for Mr. Mount, please. That's an important job, because you bring us a big check here when you're in the city of Anlouza. Next is a, a report to the planning commission of the city of Anlouza, we have a nomination to the planning commission.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we report Mr. Joe Diggs to the planning commission.
All right, we have a nomination of Mr. Diggs, we have a second, a second, second by Mr. Mount, any further nominations? Hearing none, all in favor of, we have a nomination of Mr. Diggs to the planning commission, please indicate by raising your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous. City attorney, we have a, a motion to select someone as our city attorney.
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Christensen?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. We have a nomination, a, a motion to employ Mr. Mark Christensen in his firm as our city council, city, city attorney. Do we have a second on that?
Mr. Mayor, I second the motion.
All right, a second by Mr. Diggs, any other discussion of that motion? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by raising your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
Okay, municipal court judge, we have a motion for that.
Oh, I make the motion for Michael Jones, if, 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 if.
All right, Michael Jones, Jr.? By Mr. Wells, a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by, uh, Mr. Thompson, all right. Any further discussion, any questions, or comments about that? The council. Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by raising your right hand and saying aye.
Aye.
We oppose the same sign, and that here is unanimous. It's my job to reappoint our department heads, and assistant department heads, and I'm happy to reappoint each and every one of you who holds any of those positions now, thank you for your job, as you do for part of the next four years. We also have to select our auditor, we, we have an audit each year of our city finances, and, as well as our utility board finances, and we have a CPA firm that does it for us, but we have to make that selection each year, I mean, each quarter anyway. And so, we will do that today, do we have a, a motion with respect to that? I'm sorry, that's, I'm sorry, that's, that's by me, I forgot. A hereby appoint waiver, Odo Pearson, A, CPA firm, as our city auditor. All right, we have to also name a deposit, official depository of our municipal funds. Let me explain this just a little bit, to be clear about it. Every four years, we let out a bid to, to banking institutions to handle our, be our official depository. We are not, we have not prepared to send out that deposit, that solicitation yet, we will do that right after the first of the year, but we have to have an official depository on record at all times. So I would recommend to you that we leave the depository where it is until we send out the solicitation and get back bids on that for perhaps a new location that is called for. I would recommend that we continue, our Truist Bank, which used to be BBNT, Truist Bank, to be our official depository, unless a change is made in that after the first of the year, and with the motion, you say, we approve that.
I make the motion to permanently curb the ranking.
All right, we have the motion by Mr. Wells, we have a second. Second by Ms. Griffin, any further discussion, questions, or comments from the council? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by raising your right hand and saying aye.
Aye.
We oppose the same sign. We have all, that is all of our official business, just a few words from me, and we will close the meeting. Again, thanks to all of you who came today to join us, this is all of me. We have a lot of work ahead of us, we've got a lot of work in process, and things that are gonna be happening pretty quickly after the first of the year, and so, stay tuned. You're always welcome to come to our council meetings. Thanks to the ambassadors for being here and making us look good, thank you, thank you for that. Anything else to come from the council? Hearing none, we will stand and adjourn.